Does it apply to us soon?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what it's made for is these types of.
So what do we gotta do?
I don't really know.
You sent an email.
It's approved, second safe time. I don't know how hard the work has to be.
It's hard for us to approve that money without seeing it.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but we should have done.
We can retro it back.
Should we, uh?
Let me get the details on it.
Should we maybe do it, we can't carry it, we have to dump it before January first.
No, I think you have to adopt it before January one, but if you don't have it, we can retro it back. I don't even really, I don't think it even applies to this, let me check it.
It, but it says employee, that's what my question is.
Yeah, but I don't think we work enough though.
But you do.
We do.
For every thirty hours worked, you get one day.
Get one hour.
One hour. One hour?
Every thirty hours, one hour.
Okay, one hour.
She said she wanted a day.
Can't remember how many hours.
Forty-eight hours a year. You can limit it to forty-eight hours a year? Always, we can look into it and have another meeting.
I'll have it ready by January. We can, if it's to pay, you can retro pay it back, if it even applies.
Okay, so you wanna put that on next month's agenda? I don't really, I always look, I'm right there. Uh, what is the next, is it the third or?
Fourth.
Fourth? We do have, we have to.
Now, who's named today?
They're part, they go for part-time.
It's for part, anybody who's.
Anybody that works thirty hours. Thirty hours. Gets it, anybody. Even the part-time people.
Yeah.
You working on a project?
Wendy, isn't he working on a project?
Yeah. You build another one?
Uh, one we bought, built last winter. Yeah, that's, that's basically a part in the shop right now. Nancy and I just loaded the front, painted sixty onto the stand just before we got here. Found out that I'm not thirty years old no more. I get heavy every year.
You know, I bought some dog food and I had it in the cart and I was looking at it. Big tall guy come walking by. Yes, please. I've never needed that. I got arthritis and my back.
I do too.
Do you?
I have ankle боли and sprains. And I also have osteo. I got bones, tears, down.
Even the hefty making wood. Nothing smaller. Yeah, they want me to go by Minneapolis City Hall or Minneapolis Spine Flinder.
Yeah, I do it, actually, I was doing the pain clinic thing and I was on pain meds. Then they decided nobody had this way of doing epidemics. Now they don't buy any chain medicine. My pain no motivation, there's no cure for my disease. What can you do for me? Well, you can have physical therapy, well, screw that, I'm busy up at home. I don't need driving hours, just use up my hands.
Well, there's always the. Gummy bears.
I just go liquor store, man, I'm a few drinks and I don't care.
I used to drink a lot.
If gummy bears, they, they make it dry even more.
I don't know, I've been for so long, it's been a long time.
Can we move garage door? The first door.
Both, both doors.
Those doors do the same thing. Yeah, I fought that door for what I have. That's what I had, give the trees off the road. Do you wanna take one of these with you? I got already got.
I didn't even tear down the fence. Got rid of next to me. You got that barbed wire. I did start up hardware, I started up a tarp rim, mattress.
I brought a tire compartment. Did the guys catch any tires or anything on the road?
They're still laying out there.
Is everything all signed now?
No.
Dean, are you gonna pick up all that wood or do you want, are you gonna leave something?
I'll pick up all that wood, but it's gonna take a little bit.
Oh, that's fine, I just didn't know if you wanted me to come back upstairs.
I'll probably get the skid loader going, cause that guy, it looks kinda heavy.
Some of that, some of that oak gets pretty big there.
I did the first few piles and I got some oak that was big.
Did you by chance find an axe and a wedge up there?
Not yet.
We're missing an axe and a wedge, I don't know if someone else picked it up or one of my guys left it laying up there.
Sure, would you get evil?
Is that the one you threw through the back windshield, by the back window? It opened up really, really big, oh yeah, it's, it's. There's a definite recovery though. I have my dad's. And it's got a pipe handle on it. You only had one person extra.
That wasn't good, was it?
Yeah, it was, that was two months ago. They're both there, two, two drivers. I'm not telling you to turn anybody in, but if you see anybody plowing across the road, out their driveway and across the road.
That happens a lot.
Call us.
It's against the law.
It's against the law.
They don't do nothing.
Yeah, there's a tag right there.
That tag's right there.
Yeah, you got one of them.
And if the downboard guys, when they're driving their motor and they see that, they pull up in the guy's driveway and tell him.
I know.
That really helps.
So, who hasn't? Who hasn't?
I don't know, I got a hundred, I'm gonna still plow with the road.
Lead the horse to water, but I can't make a drink. I can lead the horse to water, but I can't make a drink.
Go or rain truck or patrol.
I got one night bag before you moved on. I'm three twenty-five.
That's, that's a common.
But I try. Before it snows out this year, maybe you won't do it. Is my man nursing?
Anyway, for you to look at. And solidly greeting. Historical society and.
I'm not doing all three of those.
I got a review.
She said it wouldn't matter.
You took public motion to adjourn? I second. Done. Adjourn.
Um, I need some ice. Eventually it's gonna snow, it's like.
Who's the underwriting rights?
Yeah, we see a makeshift.
Dave, what are you doing, buddy?
We're already, into December. I need, it's not looking favorable for any real stuff.
Yes.
One less day winner.
So we have trap rock coming for sanding. Uh, we have four loads, four semi-loads coming.
Are we mixing that with salt this year?
Yeah.
They do.
We're gonna mix that plate.
They only put in like eight to ten percent salt, I think.
They say about ten percent, right?
No, it's actually forty percent.
Good.
Yeah, it comes, it comes that way.
Oh, it does.
It keeps the pile from freezing into a chunk, so we can get at it.
And it falls a little faster too.
So, do you have a guys, anything else on the road report?
One question, do you get it from Dresser and Sean?
Trap rock.
Yeah.
New business.
Hey, Ron, so the trap rock that we're bringing in, um, how are we dispersing it this year?
Typically, the city spreads it to us. Yeah, we don't have a truck, which better.
Oh, I thought, I thought we bought one, we're just spreading it out.
No.
Bought a truck.
We have a.
Oh, I thought we did.
We have a pickup, we bought a pickup.
Well, you got all day halls.
It'd need a whole week.
Well, you can do it.
We usually have the city north branch take care of it, they can take care of it with two or three guys.
They have good equipment.
They can, they can get it done real fast, but if we were to do it, it would take us a lot longer, so.
Well, we, well, we.
We buy it, do you start it here on site or is it start somewhere else?
It's stored up at North Branch.
Yeah.
The city of North Branch.
Okay.
Well, we key in is on is our asphalt, two hundred eighty-fifth, and intersections. And then there's a couple of intersections that I always check right away, three hundred tenth coming downhill road, right by my place. That we watch very closely, because if you start sliding and you go out on ninety-five, you're gonna be dead meat.
You get the corner.
We watch that one close. So, uh, that's what we do with our trap rock. Occasionally, we've had to go where the, the trees have shaded and it's ice. Occasionally, we did, last year, we did quite a little of that. And, uh, but.
Last year was just one of them years that we really had trouble keeping up, everybody did.
Unusual year.
This year, it's a snow gets as deep as last year, plus you shut down twenty-nine.
We're already winning right now.
Yeah. But all, see, it worked at that road last year.
End of the month.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. So, uh, I don't know, do you guys got something more to talk about?
No, we all.
You know, I'm kind of disappointed, because typically, the constituents bring sugar-free Christmas cookies. And coffee.
They thought the board members were gonna do that, you, the head board member.
We've done that, we used to do that.
Yeah.
So, we, we were gonna bring the sugar-free cookies, but we were waiting for the sugar-loaded cookies to board.
Right. There you go.
Way to go. Much more.
Well, I think we've done a lot, a lot this year and, uh, and I think that machine kinda worked out. You guys ran it more than I did, maybe you could give us a report on what you thought of that machine.
How much did you ride?
I didn't run it at all.
Well, you said we ran it more than you and I. Where are you at?
A lot more than me.
Good idea, John.
So, I, give us a little report on that thing, John, so that the people know what.
It does a phenomenal job where it needs to be. It does, it's not the all-purpose thing. Um, like Travis said last meeting, we still need the arm to do some brushing with the blades. I did see, they have come out with, um, a three-bladed arm that they're, I don't know if John Deere, Cat or somebody's gonna be running it. It actually mounts on a tractor, like, um.
So Shar, Sharburnson just called and they have the machine that you guys wanted, with the nice rotary disc gun at the best.
That's true, yeah.
So they have it available now, he just called Monday this week. He just got the head and it's a big head and he didn't like to switch it, the first one was the rotary blades that do a bad job, they kinda hatch out. But this is a nice clean cut like Foresters got, he said it's available if you guys wanted it for the same price.
From?
Sharburnson.
Okay.
And that's the boom, the tractor's a.
Can that be next year?
You could do it this year, you have.
Right now.
You could, I mean, we have, we have some.
I don't have the time to run it.
Ronnie, you don't have the time to run it?
Travis.
Because you guys forced me into it, now I gotta bait.
Someone's holding me down, but I'm gonna push this foot on the brake.
So he's holding it, if you guys want, I just need to let him know yes or no.
Probably wouldn't be.
What's the price on that?
That's about forty-two hundred a week, so it's on a John Deere tractor with an eighteen-foot boom arm?
They come with a track crew or whatever.
Yeah, no, you have to get the whole unit, it's bolted on, it's stationary.
Yep. But it does a nice clean cut like a chainsaw.
Sounds like it's a better one than, but I'd say any guy's footman, that was just a two-way one.
Um, it gets dependent on the winter, do it in the spring or otherwise, can late fall. Get the rest of them.
Travis.
Anybody receiving checks, please get them cashed before the end of the year, I hate outstanding checks.
I'll cash it, I'll cash it tomorrow, Bonnie.
All right.
If I remember, I'll cash it.
How's the cows doing?
They're still alive.
They sent me an email. East Central Energy sent me an email. I'm at the end of the, the poles stop before my driveway, so they have to bury mine there, I have to wait till spring. But anybody that's got a pole going to their house, they will. That's pretty good. We should sell it.
The, uh, East Central Energies has, has, uh.
I don't know if there, if you're in the area that East Central's streaming and lining the poles. I signed up for immediately right away, wanting to, showing my interest. The power going to my house goes underground, so they sent me an email saying that they regretted for me that they will get to me in the spring. Cause the ground is starting to freeze up already, so they gotta plow mine underground. But anybody else that has a pole going to their house with a mast, you will get hooked up this winter. And rumor has it, depending on the package you go out there, it's gonna average around a hundred bucks a month. Some less, some more, depending on what you want, so. That's the email I got, and I got a couple of emails.
I just got an email too, just literally today from East Central, so for me at Demagio, they're talking to their next.
You got mid, it's mid-cold though.
You have mid-cold.
No, great, great, no, um, then East Central.
Mid-cold came down two hundred and second to Demagio, or two hundred and first. But Demagio in the north, a little south.
Were you talking to mid-cold or East Central?
East Central.
Okay, so I literally just got an email today from East Central, I'm right over in Demagio, and they'll get to me in the next four rounds, so not this round. So they're talking to twenty-four, twenty-five season, so I just got an email today.
I got one, uh, for two hundred eighty-fifth, the same message.
A year away then.
Uh, they're saying a year, but it's looking like it will be this spring.
That's what they, they kinda told me that it was this spring, that we would be getting.
They, they ran it, they ran it on your street.
But they said it isn't, cause it's right up to it.
Is yours power go underground?
Yeah.
That's why, you and me gotta wait till spring, cause the ground is frozen.
Okay.
But anybody with a pole to the house with a mast.
Johnny, what are they putting on by in here from all that stuff going in?
It's fiber optic. So it's gonna be fast.
So you're, we're gonna get dug in.
Mine has to get dug in, so mine's hanging on a pole and the other, on the other street, so.
Something away about the ground.
You gotta be like, be nature, you have plenty of poles to use it.
What do you guys wanna do, you wanna go somewhere or not?
Do we, is everything signed?
Oh, there's a couple more, there's a couple more.
We gotta wait.
Hold your britches.
All ready to go.
Paws are ready to go, we got that, we, uh, we're getting any snow, we have some, we have to. I don't think it's gonna be maybe less than this, so I think we have to leave off Saturday, but then we gotta wait one full three hours. When we get the snow.
Hey, Ron, can I comment?
Certainly.
I like the new format on our minutes with the, uh, boxes and everything, so it makes it easier to read. Yeah, it's good.
Oh, you don't want it, okay.
My wife bought it. She'd come after you with the shotgun, but she didn't get her check.
See how fast that went?
Yeah, it goes that fast. That's when I get home, my wife will go, shoot. She done right there. If she ain't happy, don't be happy.
Oh, yeah. We have to talk about that too. What's that? Uh. The sick.
If we could, this is from like three, three-one of twenty.
Me, Sean.
Three-one of twenty-four, something like that, whatever it does, you know what I mean? The duration of the. Yeah. We fund it every year, they get the balance. Just a two cents.
We have to adopt the sick, same time.
I said you would have ten years.
Yes, it's.
It goes in January first. Last month's minute. Okay, is there a motion to accept them? Do you, uh?
No.
No, I don't, probably, I just wanna swing it up.
We like the jerk, you know, we do.
It needs feedback.
Just hoping the next couple of years, it's gonna get better and better.
Right.
I'm dropping that, okay. Through the claims. That's gonna be.
It's still gonna be.
Add some to the, the claims.
Well, I don't, yeah, I know we won't spray this, I just heard it's like a couple of year projects, like you come back in two years and you're gonna spray.
Now we're back to the meeting. He's done with the discussion.
Did you hear how this was resolved with the brush cutting that was going on over there?
Yes, now we're looking at the claims for the month.
Say that again.
She, she wanted. Did you guys hear how that was resolved with the brush cutting and Josh's concerns?
Well, Hollis is going down to check out that pile of trash or brush or whatever.
You missed what Josh was talking about.
Uh?
You missed what Josh was saying as you guys carried on with your own conversations, you had some concerns. Hollis answered that, I just wanted to know if you were there.
Sure. Yep. Now is the, uh, does the second half fire on here? No, that's a W. We gotta add that to it.
Okay, and Alfish has both of the two at two hundred forty-nine, both at two dollars is four hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Yep. I still got million files in my head, so that's a problem.
Four, four, four hundred ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight dollars, and North Branch fire is how much?
He's half, I know what it was.
Yeah, but how much is that?
I checked on two. Four ninety-eight.
Okay, I've got eighteen thousand eight hundred fourteen oh two, does that sound correct?
Yeah.
Does anybody have a?
Full one, one two.
What?
Full, full one, yeah.
I don't know, I don't have anything, you're trying to be, that's what we paid, like eighteen thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars.
It was one point five cents, so.
So, do you want the, to be one cent?
I think, I think it's one cent.
Okay, that's, well, okay.
Cause we divided it by two and we gave it the rounding up, so we do the rounding down this time.
Okay.
Then Sean, minus that eighty-four.
Yep, and on page six, Bonnie was on her duplicative, so we got straight through that eighty-four dollars and two cents on page six. Eighty-four dollars and seventy-one cents.
Oh, yes, I see that.
Up at the top of the column.
Oh, okay. Is the fuel barrel full?
Yep, it's a little over half.
So it's a grand bowl?
We have to page, I called on the eight, three oh nine.
Travis, is it a grand bowl? Charlie, is it a grand bowl?
What was type four ninety-eight?
Uh, four ninety-eight, yep. Go first.
Eighteen, eighteen one.
Eighteen, eight fourteen, twelve, eight fourteen, four one.
Thirty-five thousand, one eleven, seventy. Thirty-five, one eleven, seventy.
Is there any corrections or discussion on that, on the motion to approve it?
That was all the, that was all, all of the claims?
Was the pole for, yeah, that's all I had.
To go for, okay.
And the fire then?
With, with the North Branch fire, they go for feed claim, I would like to entertain the motion to, uh...
I entertain the motion.
Yeah, to, I like to make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
To accept claims. Second.
Okay. All right. Road report.
We got two quotes, quotes to talk about for the fence.
Oh, you do, okay.
Bonnie, do you have that?
There'd be under, do you have anything on the road reports?
There's, there's, didn't stop yet at the intersection, but probably not.
Well, Johnny's gonna keep, keep.
Deutschlander one oh?
I'll be on Saturday tomorrow.
Keep blaming him until he agrees. That's all I think we can do.
Oh, that, there's a dip on that call, he stopped on John Drell. Okay, we'll get that too.
Deutschlander, Deutschlander is, uh, four thousand three hundred sixty-nine bucks. And this is Travis.
No.
I know that guy. Two thousand eighty-nine, eight ninety.
Question, if this gets done by us, he's responsible for everything after that? No warranty, no nothing?
Yeah, that's gonna be his.
It's all his.
Once it's up, then it's his responsibility after this. Or he would put it up, then it's his responsibility, you all.
But you're saying it's Travis, like, fencing?
No, not Travis, we're talking about the homeowner. Once we put the fence back up, they have to take care of their own maintenance. Same as if, if they were to put it up, they would have to maintain the road fence.
Is this what the post and the wire too?
Yeah, that's post, wire, installation.
Everything.
Yeah, but that's not, I noticed when I was going for a bid, that I noticed that he had, uh, one wire electric pot in there, I didn't bid for that.
Forget that, that's his deal.
That's his deal.
Yep.
I was gonna say, if you do that cheap, you can do by just buying it there for that. It's like a thousand dollars.
Deutschlander does, I'm not saying to grant any of that, but this.
Oh, I know.
I don't think, no, we're not responsible. If we do this, if we do this, I don't, I don't think the township can be like, like, for anything.
No, no. It wasn't perfect when we took it down. For a permanent.
Let us see what matters.
Oh.
Twenty-eight ninety.
Forty-three, sixty-nine, twenty-five.
That's the only two fourths we got? Yep.
More than two.
I don't like doing this, but I will, you make a motion on the second.
Let's discuss it first.
What are we discussing?
I don't think we should be doing it, but, um, that's my opinion.
Put the fence up, you mean?
Yeah. I mean, did, what?
Get a tackles out there. You don't know what you're talking about. Well, when we were on the talk.
I know we talked, but I didn't know we, I didn't know we agreed on any of that, so, but.
Yeah, the heat out there, that's what we agreed on.
Can I ask what you guys are discussing?
We're, we had a meeting out on this road, three hundred and tenth, uh, with this guy.
With the homeowner.
With the landowner, and we discussed what we're gonna do. And all three of us were there, and, uh...
In order to borrow from his, you know, his, his dirt to get the, you know, to get the road fixed, we had to take dirt from his, his side past our thirty-three feet, so we decided to put the fence up because we're gonna use his dirt.
As compensation.
Uh, so, you know, we had to use part of his property to fix the road or they haven't shipped it in. It's better to use land, you know, the dirt on site.
Sure.
Than it is to ship in, cause of course it matches the ground better and everything else.
Sure.
And it seemed that he was kinda happy, and we were really happy getting that done. If you get a chance, I recommend you drive up and take a look at it, cause it's so different.
I don't know if you've seen it prior to, or, you know, I don't know.
Well, while you're on the subject of it, when I was out there to bid it, um, who, I don't exactly know who did the work, but, uh, you might wanna have to go back out there and pick up all the wire and fence posts. They're all just mangled and twisted, balls of wire laying alongside, I mean, literally right off the shoulder of the road. So whoever we paid to do that should probably go out there and clean up.
Keep, let's get ahold of them. You wanna send them over or just call them?
I'll call them.
Okay, all right. So is there a motion on this thing?
You make a motion, you gotta set, you gotta take his, cause it's a little bit.
Yep, it's a nice bid.
It's a, it's a nice bid, I had to go with that more.
Sorry. Are you gonna start, you start that, are you gonna say me or what?
I don't think we're starting with ten inches across.
Is there that much, or?
Yeah, ten inches.
Is there?
Maybe not, maybe, maybe we lost an inch, but it was pushed down ten inches.
Oh.
We were just digging some electrical in on Monday, and it was ten inches.
I, I don't think it's coming out.
Yeah, I think that's a spring deal.
Yeah, it is. All right, as soon as this pot will put.
Soon as possible, but I have a spring hole in it.
Did you keep track of the mileage on two seventy-seven?
The other guy bid us a deal, can't see them two bids.
Did you?
Did you? Uh, well, one issue's us.
They're, they're kinda working on getting their, getting their ducks in a row.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they're a biomachine or what.
They were using his metal gates?
Yes.
Okay. The five strand high tension.
It's the same stuff.
Yeah, you make a motion on the second.
We already did, we started to.
I said it then.
Okay, it's already the second, it's all done.
Got that, Sean?
Just go back to review, so that was.
All right.
Clarified.
So, uh, is there anything other, other than that on the road business?
Back to road reports, you know, you gotta.
Yeah, road reports.
And then four loads are gonna come tomorrow, do you wanna get more or leave it or what?
I think was, I think. Four load, four load.
Now these are in, uh, in that envelope, so I have to add these to the claim?
Nope, I got them in the claim, I just need to add that to the claim itself.
Oh, okay.
That's the twenty bucks.
Okay. But this is more than twenty bucks now?
Yeah, you have.
Late charge.
Oh, and then they'll reverse it.
They'll reverse it?
Yep.
Are you sure about that?
If you tell, if you tell them to.
Are you all set, Sean?
Yep, that's cool.
Okay, I'm gonna call the December meeting, North Branch Township order, we'll have the pledge of allegiance, please remove your hats. Apology allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Well, the first order of business, I see that, uh, that there are townships now that are forming their own militia. Militia, is that, am I saying that right?
Militia.
Militia! So we need a head for that.
Army.
Okay, can we have the treasure report, uh, Sean? Bonnie? You forgot your name.
Uh, the business checking, we have seventeen thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. The money market savings, we have twenty-two thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars and forty-one cents. And the bond two eighty-fifth savings, we have eleven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. We get twelve thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars of outstanding checks. Did I say that right, twelve thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars? And we had income this month of two mailbox swing arms for a total of one fifty, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. And first bank and trust bond interest was ninety-two cents, and money market savings was two dollars and eighty-five cents interest. For a grand total of fifty-one thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. We also received on December one, so it'll go into next month's numbers, but we received our second half taxes of a hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents.
So the grand total is two forty-nine, is that right?
Well, I don't total it that way, I'm like, yeah, I suppose it, that's what you, yeah, I do the fifty-one for the month.
Oh, okay.
Cause that, that hundred and ninety-seven doesn't add in until next month, at the end of the month, of this month.
Okay. But you got it.
Yes, we've got it in there.
Are there any additions or corrections to the treasures report? Not to entertain a motion or receive it?
Entertain a motion, accept it. Second.
Now let's move on to last one minute.
Did he put the mailbox in, or Johnny, you put the mailbox, screen posted?
Nope, the guy behind you.
Hoss. Hoss did it, okay, good man, Hoss. Okay, he says.
Did you get the trap rock in over there, Sean?
No, it's not, so you, you start with the four loads, you get some back up on the road reports.
Okay. All right. So how many, how many miles of, did we do with the machine?
Uh, it's right up there in front of you.
Uh?
On the map there.
Oh, here's.
We got it on, but.
So we don't know how many miles it is?
I didn't really count it all.
Okay. So there's yellow and there's green.
Yellow's what John did?
Yellow is what John did, oh, but it's all the same green.
Yeah, all that was the same machine, yeah.
Okay, all right. Was there anybody that commented on the road, if you were doing them with the machine?
Not as we were doing them, no.
Okay.
Some people did like it, they were, a lot of people were happy that we did do it.
Okay, all right.
We did gain.
Go ahead, Tim.
You know where, uh, Demagio had been, then was that two eighty-second, then it goes to?
Yep.
Whatever it is. Look, uh, there's all the pine trees there, they took all the brush and, it was dropped after cutting back, put it all up next to the road.
Put it on the road?
Just on the edge of it.
On the edge of the road? Who did that?
I don't know, it's here there.
And it was, you say that, I went by the.
Didn't pick it up?
Yeah, we had to pick it up.
We laid it on the floor.
Why?
So that, that's kind of on the northwest, northwest of the road then.
Uh, south. It's almost center, know where, Procoxburg?
Yeah.
Then all the pine trees that goes to the west, right there.
Oh, okay.
So I'll say, on the road cutting, uh, I just have a few comments on it.
Go ahead, this is a good time to go.
So, my name's Josh, this is my first time here, we moved here back in September, uh, been here for a year and a half now. Um, we called about the road cutting when we heard it was gonna happen, you know, we got the little notice, and, uh, just trying to understand what it meant, so it was hard getting ahold of three contacts on there to start with.
Did I talk to your wife?
Yeah, she may have talked to her.
Yeah.
That may have been one of them.
Did I talk to you?
Yes, you may be the other one.
I talked to you first.
Are you, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm Dean.
What's that?
I'm Dean.
Dean, okay.
I believe I talked to you.
And I'm on.
Yep. So, so my problem, first problem is the herbicides, right, I've got dogs, and I don't know what you guys are spraying out there.
We, can I just say that we, we like to spray, but we haven't sprayed.
Okay.
We didn't spray this year. And, uh, what we spray typically is the regrowth, and if it's too late, there's no regrowth anyway.
Yep.
So we haven't done any spraying this year.
Okay, that sounds good, we didn't know that, so that's part of the reason I'm here, so, um, I know I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors on the corner there as well, they just, we just wanna talk about the herbicides a little bit, we got dogs, okay? That was one thing, um, the other thing is, I heard it was a new machine, I know it doesn't do like the best job cleaning it, but in my culvert in particular, it left quite a mess there, there's a bunch of, and I can clean it up, right, I just, it's tipped over shrubs and bushes and stuff, that's all shredded up. Um, I'll just say I feel like if that could have been cleaned up a little bit, maybe I wouldn't be sitting here raising my hand, uh, and that.
Which, which road are you talking about?
So I'm right on the corner of three twenty-first and Tucker, on the north side of three twenty-first. Um, on the corner of my driveway and three twenty-first is where the, the mess is, um...
I think I came out and talked to your wife too, didn't I?
You talked, so you, I think you talked to Marcia.
Oh, okay.
Who was on the corner, that's not my wife, she's my, my neighbor, but she had some concerns as well. Um, so that particular area, we love our trees, that's why I called, right, I like the privacy. That particular area actually went past thirty-three feet as well, so it's too late now, right, it's all cut, but I guess at a minimum, I'm just saying, if that could be cleaned up, and there's spots down the road too, where it looks like it was just... So I don't know what your process is, right, do you take that brush out of there, is it just meant to be mulched up and left? I'm just trying to understand that.
This is our, actually, I think it's our first year to use this machine. And, uh, so we're, it's a, it's a learning experience for us. And, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of different kinds of machine, and that this apparently leaves some little larger pieces. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't pulverize, it doesn't like go through a chipper.
It's quicker than, it's quicker than cutting it down by hand and chipping it up.
Yep.
That's why we used that instead of that, because of the time.
Right, so what it did on some of them is it just basically hinged on them and just cut, it just shredded the bottom and tipped the rest of it over. So there's these, you know, there's four or five dead willows right in the corner there that are, that are tipped over. And then down to the east that go up, there's some longer ones that are chipped up and just left there.
I don't know, we'll have to kinda figure out what we're gonna do, if we're gonna go and pick up all the little pieces or what.
Well, the problem was, we ended up with a lot of rain, and so it was either we use this machine, you know, I mean, I guess people can actually feel pretty lucky that township didn't charge them for not keeping these trees out of there. That's our biggest problem, if homeowners would cut these trees out, we wouldn't have the problem we got.
But, but what is the problem, that's my other?
They, you can't get the plow trucks down the roads.
So I don't understand that, we lived there all winter last year, and we had the most snow ever, and those roads were, you guys did an amazing job clearing the roads, I'll say that, and there was no issues with like excess snow on the roads. That was my other concern, I'm like, you're doing it for the snow, I get that, but there's plenty of room for the snow.
But they're not just the snow, but the, the mowing too. We wanna try to mow two swats on each side, so deer running out, kids, stuff like this. I mean, we just haven't done a lot with our township in the last quite a few years as far as cutting trees back, and every year they grow.
Yep.
And you get used to them, and you say, well, that's no big deal, but when you get into one of those trucks, and you... And you get used to them, and you say, well, that's no big deal, but when you get up to one of those trucks, and you get behind the mower. You'll find that there is a problem.
Sure, no, and I, and I, I get that, you guys are trying to keep it clean, so my two takeaways here are, you went past the thirty-three feet. Which you guys on sixty-six feet of the roadway went past that. The other thing is just the, the, I would also say the mess that was, that was left there in that, in that one corner. So that, that's what I'm saying, I get this whole thing, I get that, I'm not, you know, it's just how I consider.
A new machine, and the other machine, they use by price.
Did you see?
It was like this. Next year or year after, whenever we do it again, then we ain't gonna have all this big stuff.
Sure.
It's gonna be the smallest one.
Yep.
I mean, the thumbsticks are, they're, they're gonna.
Do something like that.
Small one inches, yeah.
But they're gonna rot.
It'll get bad.
And their food.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, that's what I was.
I understand that.
Can we get, have a chat?